Good evening and welcome to the December 14th meeting of the Revere City Council. Everyone, please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. A rule of the journals of the meetings of November 30th and December 7th.
Motion to approve. So ordered. At this time, I'd like to suspend rules to take up a late communication from the Director of Finance with regard to the -- what is necessary to satisfy the snow and ice budget. Mr. Anzoni?
Yes. Before you, I sent a communication about the snow and ice deficit. Last winter, as you know, was probably the worst winter or snowfall for the state of Massachusetts. In fact, it was record-setting. The amount of monies that we had to spend were extraordinary in order to not only plow during the storm but snow removal during the storm. And what we're looking at is the state decided, well, there's two areas that we look for relief. One was FEMA. They declared a state of emergency and during a certain time period. We've gotten the records together submitted to FEMA and our amount that we are looking for from them, under their guidelines, is $350,000. We then, we expended in total $1,669,991. That's the deficit. In total, we spent over $2 million. And I have that figure here. In looking at it, what we're asking because the state passed an act of 2015, which you haven't talked about, sheet 10, section 58 of 2015, which allows the city of town to carry the deficit forward for three years. So the three years would have been fiscal year '16, '17, and '18. The subtracting from that deficit $350,000, that leaves a total deficit of $1,319,991. Now, you have to raise at least one-third of it each year. However, it was felt that instead of raising only $439,997, the city would raise this year a total of $621,391. So with that, we then, in the next two years, would have to raise a total of $698,600. And for fiscal year '17, as we look at the chart, it'd be a deferred payment in December 7th, 2017 of $349,300. And on '18, which would then wipe out the deficit, of $349,300. So what we're looking for tonight, the Department of Revenue has -- we've included this number in our tax rate and recap and all the other, all the forms that we've submitted for the tax rate, and the Department of Revenue has approved them. The only thing, what has to happen tonight is we need the approval of the council. And you notice at the bottom of the page, there's signature places for the councils and the mayor. So once we submit this to the DOR, which we'll be doing tomorrow, if you do approve it, then we will get our tax rate. And it's important for us to get our tax rate quickly because of the fact that we have to process the tax bills and then go through the billing process, which takes an amount of time. I know a lot of people have asked me if the tax bills are coming out. We try to, we usually send them out between the Christmas, between, excuse me, the week between Christmas and New Year's. And that way, you can make the date being in the mail by December 31st. So it's important that we meet these dates. And the Department of Revenue has seen this form, has approved the form, we've given them, to them, the backup information for the deficit. And we've also given up the backup information in lieu of a letter, in lieu of a balance sheet. So with that, we're requesting the council to approve this and so that we can send it off to the DOR tomorrow.
Before I open this up to the councils, I just want to clarify one thing in my own mind. So after this vote, what you're saying is the, because of the heavy snow we had last year, the incoming administration will be left with a deficit of over $600,000?
That's correct.
Am I hearing that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Counselors, Councilor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. George, just walk me through the process again. So has this already been booked in terms of what we've sent to DOR and our recap sheet and setting the tax rate, the $621,000 for this year and then?
$391,000, yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. So, and the, what was the reason for not going to the minimum of $439,000 for '16 and then amortizing the rest in '17 and '18?
Well, the reason going for the, not going to the minimum of $439,997 was because of the fact that usually deferral, if you can pay off as much as you can from the beginning, that's something that is a pause you like to follow. So that we felt we could pay the $621,000 under the present recap, and then that way there, the $349,000. So there'd be a lesser amount necessary to be raised by the difference between the $621 and the $349.
And have you done the work on adding the $350 to each of the '16 and '17, '18 budgets to look at the, what that does to our bottom line in terms of projections? Because I know we've seen, we've seen a lot of numbers. I think, I've seen a lot of numbers over the last few years about what fiscal year '17 and '18 looked like, and they've always been pretty grim. And that didn't include, you know, $350,000 payment for snow costs. So I just wonder if we're, if we're doing that work on '17 to make sure that '17, you know, so that I'm not walking into office with a, you know, $350,000 challenge that I'm going to have to deal with.
Well, what would happen is, is that it'd be a deficit. However, the reason we, it was raised a larger amount, you'll have a $350,000 deficit instead of a $439,000 deficit. So if we did it that way, it'd be like $100,000 and $90,000 that you wouldn't have to raise because the high amount was raised.
Right.
So that, that's, that is accruing.
And I think we need to remember that we had a conversation, I think, last week or two weeks ago about the budget, about '16, '17, and the budget going forward. And we were pretty much told that there were going to be no, there were no other exposures or no other issues with potential deficiencies. And this is a little bit of a surprise. I knew that we had some snow money that we had, probably hadn't paid because we're not, we're allowed to go to spend in deficit. But this is a little, a little surprising. And I think it should have been brought up when we had this conversation about additional expenditures with the Parks and Rec Department and some other additional expenditures that we had to, that we had to approve, I think it was last week. So I would, I hopefully, going forward, and I think I can promise this council that those of you who are going to be here next year, we're going to continue to have conversations about the budget and make sure that there aren't these kinds of surprises and that we are not, you're not surprised by additional appropriations and, you know, changes that might happen to the budget. But what does this, what does this do to, again, to our '17 budget?
Well, what it does to our '17 budget is that there's a $350,000 that's going to be necessary to be raised. Again, however, it is looking at the way you raise these things, the way you work on the recap sheet. The $621,000, there'll be a difference of some, let's see, $350. So say there's, am I right in saying $200,000, $250,000 less that you'd have to raise in next year's budget if we did, because we raised the $621,000 this year, this year's budget? We're trying to be responsible and bring it to a point where we didn't lay it off. We had the option of doing the $439,000. However, we decided not to do that, the financial team. We said, let's see how much we can pick up this year, and we picked up a larger amount than was necessary.
So aside from the, aside from the deficit that we have, the snow and ice deficit that we have, are there any other deficits out there that, that we're looking at? Because as of right now, you've, you've said a couple of times that there aren't.
Well, not that I can see. I mean, even this, this isn't something I considered, you know, this is something snow and ice, and this is something raised on a recap sheet. And it wasn't something that I saw as a deficit at that, even now, I know we have to raise it, but I didn't see the deficit as over-spended account, other, because that's something you legally are raising the tax.
But are there any other things out there that could potentially happen? And the biggest one in my mind is collective bargaining.
Well, collective bargaining, none of the collective bargaining agreements are, they're all open right now. There's, I believe, six, seven unions that haven't been resolved, and those have, will be resolved, will not be resolved by the time that you take office.
So that's an exposure in probably the millions, right?
Well, it depends on how we negotiate the contract.
Well, here's the question. How much do we have, how much, how much space do we have for '16? And then how much space do we have in '17 and '18 going forward?
To do what?
How much space do we have to be able to have additional appropriations?
Well, we have, I don't have those numbers in front of me because I didn't, I wasn't prepared to answer those questions tonight. However, we have a projection, which you have in front of you, what you've had in front of you, that shows the particular growth. I mean, we have the two and a half percent, if I'm not mistaken, each year is about $1,808, and that's going to grow every time it grows, grows exponentially. So if it grows at that point, it's $1.8 million this year, so two and a half. Next year, it will probably be almost $2 million. So then the next year after that will be probably $2.2, $2.3 million. And then that doesn't include new growth. So depending on how the budget pans out, and I'm fronting the numbers off top of my head, but as the numbers pan out, you can see that you'll have, you know, the increment of, that can be raised, you know, you have all the budget, budget, budget busters that we refer to as, say, the retirement, the health insurance, and the raises, increases, the collective bargaining increases, how much of that that will leave before you can actually see if you reach the levy limit.
Do we have an idea how much free cash will certify for '16?
No, I don't. I don't, I don't have that idea right top of my head. I know right now, we have stabilization of $5.8 million in the general fund, and we have actually $5.8 million in the general fund, and we have $2.8 million in the water enterprise fund.
Okay. And my last question, I apologize to the council for dragging this out, but how sure are you of the FEMA reimbursement projection? Because I know I've worked on FEMA reimbursements before, and they can take a while, and I know that they may not, FEMA obviously is not going to be willing to give any more money than, than, than they want. So are we, is that a conservative estimate or is that?
Well, according to their guidelines, we're very conservative. We didn't reach out and try to pull data in there that did not belong. We are pretty careful when we submit these forms, and that, that would be the number we would stand by because of the fact that we were conservative and not only that, we followed the guidelines that they put as far as they.
Right. And how far along are we in that, in that process? I know there are project worksheets that they're receiving, and I know some communities have already kind of finished them up and.
I think that's still ongoing with us. We haven't finished our total application as yet, trying to dig down into the numbers and make certain that they're all there and they're all there correctly. But I think we're nearing the end of that process.
And has there been conversation with MIMA and FEMA about these numbers? Has it been an ongoing conversation?
Well, the ongoing conversation happens with the fire chief, with FEMA. And I believe that he continues with those ongoing conversations. I haven't talked to him about it lately, but, you know, I'm sure he keep, it's one thing he's going to keep up on, and he knows how important it is to us.
So the fire chief is doing this?
The fire chief actually is the one that is a representative to FEMA.
Okay. So you haven't had any direct communication with FEMA?
I haven't had any direct communication with FEMA.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Rigo. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Director, have we yet received any monies from the state from reimbursement on the snow and ice?
There wasn't an amount received. I just don't have that, for some reason, I'm looking for that form, and I had it in my packet when I put it together, but it's not coming up. It was a short amount of money, but it was not.
A short amount of money?
It was not a large amount of money from the state.
I think there's, I think there's still money out there to be received from the state, from the RAP program. I know that there's nothing we can do at this point, but my question is, if we approve this tonight and it goes forward, if we do have an amount of money that comes back from the state, which I'm pretty confident that we will be, what do we do then?
What we can do then is, if that happens, we can lower the next year's appropriation, deficit appropriation of $349 down to whatever, by whatever we receive from the state.
For the, for the next year's out, is that what you're saying?
For the next year out, right.
Okay. Well, that, that's reasonable. But as to, Mr. President, since you, you took the opportunity to say that the administration was leaving, the new administration, in a deficit position, I think I've got to put something out there for the edification of the people. And that is that the administration took office with a $2.8 million surplus in the stabilization fund and leaves office with a $5.8 million amount of money in the stabilization fund. And it took office with a $400,000 water and sewer surplus, enterprise or stabilization, and it leaves office with a $2.8 million surplus. So I just wanted to clear that up so that.
Counselor.
The citizens don't understand that the new administration is being left in a deficit position because.
Counselor.
It's certainly being left in a better position than it was found.
Counselor, for your edification, what I was referencing was the snow and ice account due to the fact, and if you remember what I said, I said, because we had a heavy amount of snow, we spent a lot of money on snow and ice removal. And yes, there is going to be a deficit, unless you can tell me different, in the snow and ice account, isn't there?
Yeah.
That's what the Director of Finance is telling me now.
I agree, there's going to be a deficit in the snow and ice, and it may be.
Okay. That's basically what I said.
Most of it, most of it might be taken up from the reimbursement from the state. But I, I just think that it was important to let people know the finances of the city when an administration is coming in and an administration went out. So I just wanted that for the edification of the citizens.
I think the citizens are well aware of that.
Well, I don't think they are. But they are now.
Yeah. I just want to make one, say, I found that sheet I was looking for. This is the snow and ice data sheet that we submit to the Department of Revenue. The original budget for snow removal was $350,000. The supplemental appropriation transferred into snow and ice was $55,440. The expenditures and accommodations charged for the appropriation were $2,75,431. Thus leaving, I figure, what you have in your, on the top sheet page of your, as the deficit, of $1,669,991. So that's the power cut to the $1,669,991. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I misstated the free cash for the city. I think it's $5.2 million, $5,280, if I'm not mistaken, was the free cash for the general fund this year. But I don't know what the certification is going to be.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. George, this is the first time we were brought up to this, it was the $2,750, right? During the budget deliberations and for the last couple of months, no one even mentioned this at all. We were completely taken back, I'm sure the council is, to look at the magnitude of that expenditure. Why wasn't anyone brought into line? It seems like we get everything late in the city council.
Well, I don't know why it wasn't brought into line. However, the amount of the $1.6 million, I think that, I don't know if anybody transmitted to the council, but, or maybe didn't transmit it to the council, but that's the actual amount due to the tremendous amount of snow and the amount.
We know the snow, it's the worst we've ever had, we know that.
Right.
I don't want to, you know, go over that again. I'd like to go over the figures.
Right.
But how the hell did it get to that point where no one knew about it on the council?
They didn't tell us, right?
Bottom line, they kept it secret. That's, that's embarrassing. I mean, week after week, we come up here and we get broadsided by a major expenditure. I don't know what the hell's going on here, okay?
Well, listen, there's no duplicity on my part or anybody's part on my.
Well, communications is the best way to resolve anything. We all know what's going on.
I agree.
All right.
And I'd like you to know this is going on.
Yeah, it's crazy.
And during the budget discussions, we also mentioned the fact, during, during the, of the, I believe there was discussions during the tax rate approval, not the tax rate approval, but the minimum residential factor, that there was an amount put in there for, I believe the CESA, Andrew Iavon mentioned an amount in there that was put in for the snow and ice removal.
But he didn't indicate what the amount would be. I mean, that's a lot of.
He may not have, but I don't remember.
That's a lot of, a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
I mean, we had a lot of snow, but that's a lot of money.
I agree, it's a lot of money. That's what took to remove the snow. I mean, it's not something that, you know.
I'm not questioning that.
No, you're not questioning.
I'm questioning.
But I don't want to be said that I.
The communications between the city, the city and the city council.
They do.
Now, I read the Boston Globe last week, and it indicated the city of the Comalte Mass will receive a great amount of money for the snow removal. What was that all about?
Well, there's an amount of money that they're going to receive from the.
More than they expected.
More than they expected, well, if they've changed that amount or if they change the definition, as I said, what happens is we can continue our applying for these reimbursements. If it does, it does happen, once you vote this in, what will happen is that we then can go into the next two fiscal years. So say, for example, we have, well, we do have, $350,000, $49,000 we have to raise next year. Say if they approve another $350,000, we don't have to raise that amount next year. So, and we can do that for the succeeding year. So if they give us an amount over that, we also can go to the next succeeding year and cut down the budget. We always going to apply it down into the deferral.
Because of severity of the winter, they're allowing us to expend this money over three years and not just the one year as normally done, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Riden.
Just quickly, George, and very, back to some very basic information I think people are interested in. To whom do we owe $1,669,991 at this point?
Well, it was payment of bills to vendors who removed the, did snow removal.
Well, we owe them that money?
We paid them that money, that's why we're in a deficit.
We paid them out of a deficit fund, so we, all right.
Because they have the legal right to.
Let me ask you this. Are they carrying costs over the next three years for whatever we do not pay either this coming fiscal year or any future fiscal year?
No, there's no carrying cost.
So if there are any carrying costs, why would we not just pay the, an even amount over the three periods, since it's not really costing us anything to pay it sooner rather than later, thereby taking the surprise period, which is the closest period, the period that which, in which we have very little room to respond? Why would we be paying more then, now, rather than later?
Well, what we wanted to do too is also show the financial markets that we're taking hold of the situation. They'd be looking at our deficit and they say, okay, you can raise it over three years. If we show we had a larger amount we could pay at the beginning, they could, they look favorably on that. So the other part of this is that the financial markets also look at these, and they also look at our balance sheet. So we explain it away, saying we handle them in a very responsible, what we feel is a more responsible way than just doing it the even amount of $439 over those equal period times, with the three years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riden. Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few questions pertaining to some of the funds that we were supposed to receive and some funds that we allotted in the budget. First was the $30,000 for hydrant, fire hydrant markets, markers. Did we use those, use that, the $30,000, were they purchased yet?
I believe that contract was allotted, and they're working on that now.
Point of information, since the president's not here, I'll just take the liberty. The hydrant markers are up. I've seen them.
They're already up.
They look terrific.
I haven't seen them.
Well, they're on no way. Because they're up on Cushman, they're up on, I've seen them all over the city.
Yeah, they're not in my neighborhood. Yeah. Also, the $117,000 that we got in funds for potholes, was that depleted? Are those funds depleted?
The $117,000 had to be spent by June 30th, and it was.
It was, okay.
Counselor Morabito, is that?
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. George, I noticed in the paper the last week, the week before, there was an article about the state getting $240 million. Is that what this $350,000 is intended to tie into?
Well, if we, if it trickles down from the state to the cities and towns, what will happen is that the monies we have deferred in the next two years will be lessened by the amount that we see from the reimbursement from the state. So that's what we're looking at.
Okay. So this, that $350 was based on what you said before in your calculations?
Uh huh.
And then there could be more coming because.
There could be more coming.
Okay. Just as a, an aside for Counselor Morabito, I did talk to the chief the other day, and they are putting all the markers in, and they've given each shift, each group, certain streets to do, and they're not all done. They've done the main streets first, and they're working up into the side streets. I noticed they were up in my area this afternoon, doing some of them. So they are putting them up, I have seen them, you know, they do the trick. We know where the hydrants are now, you know, and it's, I think it's very good that we did that. Mr. President, you know, what I have to say is that this is the first time in my career, you know, in the 16 years that I've been here, that we've ever had to go through this route. Usually, we've done it all in one, one whack into the next fiscal year. Again, like everybody said, because of the amount of snow. So, you know, I think it's wise that we split it out and work it out and, you know, and everybody has their different opinions on which way to do it, you know, and, you know, Mayor Rizzo has decided to work this route with, you know, with Judge Anzoni, our finance director, and, you know, if somebody can come up with a better way to do something, you know, without delaying things further, you know, I'm, I'm open to, you know, to listen to it. But for now, you know, I have no problem with this, and, you know, I think we ought to move forward with it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Novoselfsky. Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, historically, we've been allowed to deficit spend, snow removal, and that's the only. and that's the only line of a charter account that we could deficit spend. I recall back in the years where it was a budget of $10,000 and when we appropriated, the mayor appropriated that and the council approved it, we thought we were doing a big deal. But through the pains of what we have experienced this past year, and we all know it too well, it costs money to operate the city and get the type of performance that we need and require to make our cities safe. So, and this is the painful truth of what it is. The unfortunate part about it is it's a hefty amount, far greater than I'd ever imagined, but I, I thought it was in the a million, million and a half category. I never realized it was so great. But it is what it is and we had to pay the vendors because we want the service, so, and I think prorating it the way we're doing and amateurizing it, the way we're doing it, is the, is the cost-effective way. If you're doing cost accounting, this would be the effective, most productive, efficient way to, to perform it. So, again, it's painful, but we have to do it and I just think that we, we got to go forward and, and if any of us have concerns about the upcoming year or any years thereafter about the performance or the expenditure of snow removal, I think we can get that report monthly if we wish during the winter months. There's only a couple of months that would be prevalent for us to review that and namely probably in the month of February, reviewing January's activity and March during February's activity. So, just a thought. But again, it's painful to see this kind of money being expended, but yet we had to do it. And the worst case scenario is that you get, you don't see anything in July, you know, there's no improvement to your community, it's just safety for our citizens and that's what we're all looking for, so. That's what we have to do.
You know, I recommend to the council that if you want up-to-date information or monthly information, they request from the city that they give you a report, a monthly report of receipts and expenditures, which they can do and they can provide. So I think that will be the best thing to keep everybody up to date, for those who want to be kept up to date, and that I recommend that that be requested from the council so that, that way there, everybody can see right in front of them exactly what's happening on a monthly basis. So if it's not come out at the end of the month, because it takes time to develop, or you probably like to be a month behind tops, and you should be requesting that. I think at one time the council actually did receive that on a monthly basis, I think they did when you were mayor.
Mr. President, one other thing, we can't make that motion tonight because it's signed down, but I think the first of the year after we're all sworn in again, we can make that type of motion and proceed from there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gennasso. Mr. Anzoni, thank you very much for your appearance here this evening and enlightening the council. We'll now take a roll call vote on this.
I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Call the roll, please.
Shall the City Council approve the snow and ice amateurization schedule in accordance with Chapter 10, Section 58 of the Acts of 2015? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the schedule has been approved.
Will now return to our regular outward business.
Calendar item number one, a certificate of commendation will be awarded to Sabir Abu Galala of The Good Diner for his generous donation of Thanksgiving dinners to the First Congregational Church.
Any of you who know what's gone on the last year might think that I'm the last person who would be giving this certificate of commendation. But it's important, I think, for everyone to realize that regardless of political affiliation, when, when people do great things for the city, they need to be recognized. Sabir has been a staple in the community, but he's also done things that people don't know very much about, giving or donating hundreds of turkey dinners on Thanksgiving to our senior center and, and to the First Congregational Church is, and he's not looking for this recognition. But I, I thought, especially for, for my position and what's gone on the last couple of months, I thought it was important for everyone to realize that, again, regardless of political affiliations, regardless of people's opinions, we can recognize great work and I hope that Sabir continues his fine generosity and I look forward to, to working with him, so.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. And so I'll, I'll read the certificate real quick. Certificate of commendation and grateful appreciation of you providing home-cooked Thanksgiving dinners to hundreds of needy families at the First Congregational Church in Revere, and in recognition of your continuous generosity to this community, especially around the holiday season, special recognition is hereby accorded to Sabir Abu Galala, The Good Diner, 361 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 14th day of December and the year of our Lord, 2015, and the Independence of the United States of America, the 239th.
Thank you. Thank you and happy holiday, everybody.
Happy holiday.
I just want to say I had lunch in the diner the other day with John Varingia and the food was excellent and I urge everyone if they're in the area on Broadway for lunch or a snack or something to go in there because it's a great place. Thank you. He did, of course.
Calendar item number two, report of the zoning subcommittee.
Counselor Riden.
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning subcommittee met this evening before the City Council meeting to consider two matters somewhat related. The first is C-15-13, that's a petition from Bell Atlantic Mobile and Massachusetts Corporation, LTD, DBA Verizon Wireless, represented by McLean Middleton Professional Association in Manchester, New Hampshire, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to install a telecommunications facility consisting of 16, a 16-panel array of antenna and associated equipment mounted on the rooftop at 10 Yeeman Street in Revere, Massachusetts. The petitioner was here represented by council and the matter was considered by the subcommittee and reported out unanimously, favorably for a vote by the full City Council this evening. We were presented also with a certificate from a structural engineer regarding the safety of the, the safety of the facility in, in terms of wind resistance. So I suggest that the City Council take a vote on that matter this evening.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the applicant for special permit C-15-13 for 10 Yeeman Street? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Second matter on the agenda is C-14-13, I'm sorry, C-15-14. Again, Bell Atlantic Mobile and Massachusetts, DBA Verizon Wireless, represented by McLean Middleton Professional Association in Manchester, New Hampshire, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to install a telecommunications facility consisting of a nine-panel array of antenna and associated equipment mounted on the rooftop of 4 Malden Street in Revere, Massachusetts. Again, the petitioner represented by council was here this evening and also offered some explanations as to why there is a dead spot, more or less, to be, to be remediated by the installation of this equipment and the subcommittee took no position on, on recommending or not recommending this for approval.
Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the applicant for special permit C-15-14 for 4 Malden Street? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor Haas?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
No.
No, Counselor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit fails.
President, like to suspend rules to take up immediate reconsideration with the hopes it does not prevail?
Counselor Zambudo?
Pursuant to Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following council orders are being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. It's calendar items number three through 12.
Mr. Bell, you'd like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. William Bell, from the Revere. I'm in favor of some of these items and opposed to some of these items that you're all going to let die, you sign die. The most important item, as I can see, is the apartment moratorium issue. Many people in the City of Revere appeared in the past to support this potential moratorium, including myself and the mayor. I said except for senior citizen housing and veterans housing, there should be a moratorium. And I believe the mayor and maybe one other person agreed with the same type of issue. Mr. President, you know, yourself, myself, Counselor Haas, we're at the meeting down the beach at 515 Boulevard the other night and the main concern for the people was traffic and that particular thing. And there are some apartment locations by right that can still build, I believe. We shouldn't allow others to build without any real proper planning. Don't let this die tonight, pass it. I've heard one or two comments about maybe the legality of the proposed ordinance, but that's been sitting in committee for weeks, no discussion whatsoever. I would think it behooves this body to pass this and at least give some temporary relief to the public. Anyone that goes in this city in a car between 7:00 and 9:00, 9:30 in the morning knows what I'm talking about, potential traffic. You heard the people loud and clear about shars. And the mayor did too, obviously, because he came up and spoke for that and he took a lot of abuse for what I believe was well-founded. But most of you, I think to the person, spoke in favor, and all the people who were here behind me that night, in favor of moratorium. Do it, pass it tonight and give the people a good holiday season, like I wish them, all of you to have yourselves, and a happy new year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Counselor Riden, did you want to?
The only thing I would address on that matter is this, the theory, I think, is strong. The theory of taking a look at our residential development is, is a good idea. The devil, as always, is in the details. The proposal that was presented to us was in no way, shape, or form to me acceptable and it was way too, a way too simplistic effort to remediate a really difficult problem. We have a new administration coming in, as Mr. Bell suggested. The Counselor Rego was generally supportive, at least, of, of the, of the theory and I think it certainly deserves exploring. But before we go around approving proposals, we need to look closely at them to make sure we're doing the right thing and make sure that the, that the efforts that we're making are, are consistent with our goals. And far too many times we find ordinances created that don't, don't satisfy our goals and that need to be changed and that in some cases we regret them. And I don't want this to be one of them. A moratorium telling people that they can't do with their property what they thought they could do ought to be considered very, very seriously and with a lot of thought. So I think that at this point, again, hopefully that the administration will, will reconsider this, will put together a proposal, working with the City Council, working with the planning board, working with the other boards that may have some influence over this, this issue, and come up with an idea that, that works for us. And when I say work, I mean something that allows us to carve out areas that we can, we can appreciate residential development that is good for the city and not residential development that is clearly bad. And, and I can constantly reference the so-called Rumly Flats project, which is an example of the latter. So hopefully going forward that we'll be able to, the city will be able to sit down and come up with a plan that works for everybody and makes sense for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riden. Are there any other councils that want to speak on this?
Ready, Mr. President?
Counselor Rego.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
You talked about this seconds ago.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the issue of the, of the moratorium, I said this when it was proposed, that I thought it was proposed as a knee-jerk reaction. It wasn't very well thought out and I think we heard that night of how poorly written it was. While, and, and I agree with Counselor Riden that while the, the idea may have some merit, it, it will take a little bit of time and a little bit of planning to make sure that it's done correctly. And obviously, in, in, in my next role, I will be, be looking at that and I think it has to be done in, in the context of a comprehensive plan. And the ideas of getting everyone around the table and understanding, maybe there are some pieces of property that can have some good residential development, because there is some good residential development. One-bedrooms, housing for seniors, housing for, for veterans are all worthy causes and I think we can, we can talk about and we can have a conversation about that. But as constructed and as written, the moratorium that was proposed to us is not something that I, I think we would be wise to pass. So I, I think that we need to have further conversations and I'm going to be, I'll be happy to have those conversations from the other side of that podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rego. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I agree with both Counselor Riden and Counselor Rego and I will not vote on a carte blanche moratorium of this effect. Counselor Rego mentioned veterans, there's also senior citizens. We're building constantly, you know, our, our affordable housing is down, we're, we're below the 10%, which opens up to us, opens us up to a 40B situation in any particular area. And until I see something more definite and more controlled, I will not vote for a two-year moratorium. And may I say, I don't want to tie the hands of the new mayor, because I think he, you know, he has a lot of ideas, like Counselor Riden said. he has a lot of ideas, like Counselor Redden said, there's good and there's bad. And I don't want to stop the good. I want to leave that opportunity open. So with that, you know, I hope this does get placed on file. And if somebody wants to bring it up next year under a new council, that's another issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Novoselsky. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it was a couple of months ago that the Shaws site came up and the developers canceled with prejudice, without prejudice, I'm sorry. And I took a hit on this because I voted for them to come back and propose their proposal, whether they tweaked it or not. I think that we have 11 capable councillors here to make a decision, a new mayor. And I think that if I voted yes for this, then I would be flip-flopping, so I'm going to vote no. Thank you. Oh, there's no vote? Oh, okay. Well, I'm not in favor of it.
Are there any other councillors?
I just want to state my position. I think it's very clear. I'm opposed to turning commercial property into residential property. I was against the 42 units down on Mills Avenue. I stuck with the neighbors down there. They didn't want it. I didn't want it. I didn't think it was good for the area. There's four units being proposed down on Beverly Street in an area that is prone to flooding, which would affect all of the work that Farmer Mayor Ambrosino did down there with regard to drainage. I'm opposed to that. I spoke against that at the Conservation Commission. And I will continue to support any apartment development that I think is not good for this city. There is currently a proposal for 520 or 540 Boulevard coming before the ZBA this Wednesday for a variance on the front and a variance on the rear. They can, as a matter of right, go 12 stories. They can put in apartments or condominiums. Their position is to put in apartments. And I'm speaking with them currently to assure that those apartments down the road, if necessary, could be turned into condominiums, which would be much more preferable down on that end of the Boulevard. So that's my position. And I hope that Mayor Orego, in fact, I feel strongly that Mayor Orego will come up with a plan, Mayor Electo Orego will come up with a plan in January that will satisfy the zoning in this city with regard to apartments. Items three to 12 are all placed on file.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor requests the DPW to install signage indicating tractor-trailers are restricted from entering onto Rice Ave. Signage should be located at the intersection of the Linway in Rice Ave.
We've had a problem down there with large trailer, tractors, trucks, tractor-trailer trucks, whatever you want to call them, going onto Rice Avenue off of the Linway and finding it very difficult, if not impossible, to get out of that area down there once they get in because of the narrowness of the streets. So I'm requesting that the signs be put up down there that would indicate no tractor-trailers allowed into that area. And the other thing, I'd like to amend this motion to include the Traffic Commission to take notice of the heavy volume of traffic that is coming off of Route 1A early in the morning because of backups on Route 1A and cutting through Mills Avenue from John Avenue at a high rate of speed. And I'm going to ask the Traffic Commission at their next meeting to come up with a solution to remedy that situation. And also, in the interim, I've talked to the Chief of Police, Chief Cafarelli, and he's indicated that he's assigned an officer to monitor that situation down there until a solution is issued out by the Traffic Commission. On that motion, all in favor, so order.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by councilors Zambudo and Patch, that the mayor requests the city solicitors to draft a lease agreement between the city of Revere and the property owners of 120 and 130 Savage Street for the use of a 40-foot paper extension of Moretti Street, which is located between said properties.
Counselor Patch? And Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
This is just, I guess this is a new procedure for paper streets in the city. I don't particularly agree with it. The new city engineer seems to be more concerned about future pipes or something under the ground. But so be it. This should satisfy the people that want to use that land down there. So hopefully, they'll be able to do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I think this works out better for the butters because they get to use the property. Obviously, nobody can build on this property and it's just extends their yard a little bit. So I think it's a good solution for, and we still have the, obviously, we still have our protected, our infrastructure is still protected with this kind of an agreement. Thank you very much.
The council will stand adjourned for five minutes. On that motion, all in favor, so order. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number 15 is the legislative bench. In keeping with the custom and tradition of the Revere City Council, the city council honored six of its members by placing their names and years of service as members of the city council on nameplates on the city council's legislative bench, which sits in the city council chamber behind the members of the council. To receive this special recognition, city councilors must have served for a decade or more in the city council. Currently, the names of 19 past and present members of the city council are on the legislative bench. Six councilors will be honored this evening by having their names and years of service placed on the legislative bench. They are as follows. Number one, Ward Three City Councilor and longest-serving member of the Revere City Council, Arthur F. Guanasso's name is placed on the legislative bench with 28 years of service. Two, Councilor-at-Large Robert J. Haas Jr.'s name is placed on the legislative bench with 24 years of service. Three, Councilor-at-Large Anthony T. Zambudo is placed on the legislative bench with 16 years of service. Four, Ward Two City Councilor Ivan Novoselsky's name is placed on the legislative bench with 16 years of service as well. Five, Ward Five City Councilor and 2015 City Council President John F. Powers's name will be placed on the legislative bench with 15 years and seven months of service. And six, late Ward One City Councilor Richard A. Penta's name will be placed on the legislative bench with 14 years and five months of service as a member of the city council. And calendar item number 16 will pay tribute to the outgoing city councilors. Outgoing City Councilor-at-Large Brian M. Orego will be awarded a plaque in honor of his service on the Revere City Council.
Counselor Orego?
I just want to say that during my tenure as a city councillor, this is an exciting moment for me, and I know it is for Mayor-elect Brian Orego. This is the first time that I have ever had the opportunity to present an incoming mayor with a plaque. And I think a well-deserved plaque. I know that in the years ahead, we expect great things from Counselor Orego as mayor. And I feel confident that he will follow down that road. Thank you.
Outgoing, oh. Outgoing Ward Four City Councilor Stephen F. Redden will be awarded a plaque in honor of his service on the Revere City Council.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just have a few words to say. And I thank you for, thank you, Counselor Orego, for allotting me a little extra time by not talking. I appreciate that.
Geez, it's nine pages here.
No, actually, I want to thank my colleagues very much for their dedication and earnest love of the city. I want to thank you all for acting so civilly and for the civil and very forthright manner in which we conducted our business here for the last six years and during my term. I want to thank the citizens of Ward Four for having honored me with the privilege to represent them for the past six years as well. And finally, I want to thank my family and friends for their support, especially two people, my good and unrelenting friend, Louis Cholone, who's been with me from the beginning, and most importantly, my wife, Dallin, to whom I owe everything. Thank you all.
Thank you, Stephen, for those eloquent words. I just want to say on behalf of Stephen that I had the opportunity to appoint him as Chairman of Zoning last year. And he has done a tremendous job in that capacity. I don't think there's anyone on this council that is as knowledgeable as Stephen is and works as tirelessly as Stephen does with regard to the zoning issues that face this city. And I certainly, and I know the residents of this city, will miss him, not having him here to spend the time to go into those zoning issues, which can and have been, over the years, very complicated. But again, Stephen, I want to thank you for your efforts with regard to that. Thank you.
Now, my dear friend, Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President?
Counselor, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Well, it's a great honor that has been bestowed upon me by the Ward Three residents. It certainly, it doesn't seem like 28 years. And I can recall the very first time I came into this council chamber. I was a little bit taken back by it because I heard so many things about what goes on there and the history of this chamber. So you get a little nervous and apprehensive. But as the years grew on, I actually took it upon myself to love this place and enjoy every moment in this chamber. And this chamber means a lot to me. It's a very special place. It's where the people's business is conducted. There are always contentious situations going on. But I think that the council, over the years, have shown that, you know, we have a job to do. It's difficult at times. We can't make everybody happy. But the best thing we can do is do the best that we possibly can, and nobody can deny that. So I applaud my colleagues this current year for doing a great job, and colleagues in the past. And each and every one of them worked very, very hard and dedicated to what we do. Sometimes, it might not appear that way. But a lot of work goes into being a city councillor. It's not just meeting up here on a Monday night. We go to wakes, weddings, funerals, and the whole works. I mean, we go to fundraisers and special events. We go to senior buildings to try to make the seniors happy. This past Saturday, I played Santa Claus at Friggin Gardens for the 30th year in a row. So to me, those are the wonderful things serving civic government allows you to do and to be recognized for. So I thank you and appreciate this particular honor, and I look forward to another 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. And I believe that that was another good choice on my part, appointing Counselor Guanasso Chairman of the Appointment Subcommittee. He's done an excellent job in that capacity. He's always been fair, always been there to scrutinize all of the applicants that came before him. And for that reason, we have some excellent people that serve out there on the various boards and commissions. And that's so important to this city, particularly when you're talking about zoning and committees like that. Arthur, thank you very much, and thank you for your friendship. I'd also like to call up here, if I may, the outgoing council vice president. You've got a... Counselor Haas, come up here. I didn't know we were taking these numerically.
I didn't know we were doing this.
Counselor Haas?
I know. I first like to thank the citizens of the community for re-electing me again. 24 years is a long time as sitting in this chamber, eight years as mayor. You know, when you really look at it, 24 and eight, it's a long time, all right? And the city, I can see the changes throughout the community. Some of them I like, some of them I dislike. And I'm here for another two years, so hopefully I'll catch up to Arthur somewhere along the line, right?
Thank you, Counselor Haas, and congratulations. And I want to say that you and I have been friends, as I have been with many of my colleagues here for a number of years. I had the opportunity to work in your office for a year when you were mayor, and I want to thank you for that publicly. Thank you. Counselor Zambudo, Vice President of Revere City Council, Dean of the Revere City Council.
Thank you so much. I just, first of all, I want to thank the citizens for keeping me up here. Some of you know, when I first ran for office, I ran on a platform of term limits. I got here and I found out I made a difference. And so I stayed. And thankfully, the citizens, the citizens allowed me to stay. But before I go on, I just want to take a second to talk about my dear friend and colleague, Counselor Redden, who sat next to me for all these years. And I don't think in all my years in the city council, I could have ever sat next to a more professional, dedicated, public servant. So, and a true champion of zoning. And I'm going to miss him dearly, and I want to thank you for your service. What can I say? It's been an honor. I, you know, I feel that I'm always up here telling the truth. Sometimes, people don't like what I have to say because it's not what they want to hear. But I'll never lie to you. And I think that's what served me well, is that the people understand that my opinions up here are reasoned. I take the time to do my homework. I do what's best for the entire city, not one neighborhood. That's what my colleagues that are ward councillors are supposed to do. I'm supposed to represent all the citizens, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. And thank you for another two years on the Revere City Council. Thank you very much. And Merry Christmas to everybody.
I guess now it comes down to me. Is he? Come up here, say a few words. Yeah, you're in the legislative bench. Yeah, you're in the Legislative Bench.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, yes, you know, I've been here for 16 years. They're not all together, but I enjoy, I enjoy my time up here. I enjoy taking care of my constituents. I enjoy working with everybody that's up here, and it has been for the last 14 years in a row. And I started back in 1978 when we had people like Johnny Jordan and our dear friend Joe Delgrasso on this council. And Councilor Guanasso, you talk about being intimidated. That's intimidation for me when I stepped up here, because I sat with Councilor Haas who's sitting now when I first started. So that's what it was back then. They were a great bunch of great people then, a bunch of great people now. I enjoy taking care of all my constituents with everything. I answer all my phone calls, I answer all my emails, I answer all my texts, not only for my constituents, but also for my councilors and my colleagues. And the bus is here, waiting for you. So thank you very much. Is that it?
Calendar item number 17, City Council President John F. Powers will be awarded a plaque in honor of his service as President of the Riviere City Council in 2015.
Thank you very much, Madam Clark. I feel very honored this evening, as I have in the past. My first election back in May of 2000 was a close election. I won by 39 votes. And that's changed a little since then. And that's all due to the residents of Ward V, who have consistently examined my record up here and consistently returned me to this historic chamber. I'd also like to thank my colleagues, present and some past, who, over that period of time, sought fit to elect me Council Vice President and in addition, Council President three times. And that is an honor and an obligation I have never taken lightly. Every vote I've made up here, I've always made to be what I thought was in the best interest of the city, despite public opinion one way or the other. And for the next two years, God willing, I will continue to carry that tradition in this chamber. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number 18, City Councilor Brian M. Arigo will be recognized as the 11th City Councilor to be elected mayor of the City of Riviere.
This has become like a campaign floor in here tonight.
Do I get to speak this time?
You certainly do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief because we have a celebration to attend, but I want to thank each and every one of you on the council for all of your hard work and your friendship. It's been a great experience to be on the council. It's going to be fun to be on the other side of that podium. Take it easy on me a little bit. But, and it's really something that I think is going to be a special time and I know that having the experience on the City Council is going to inform my decisions as mayor and inform my decisions behind that podium and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I have, like I said, a friendship that's been developed with everybody and I look forward to moving on past the election and, and working with each and every one of you to make the city a better place and to push forward and reach potential that I think we all agree is here in the city. A couple of, I will name drop a few people. Councilors Janino Haas and Powers have been significant supporters for me and have been there in difficult times and I appreciate all of their support and without their support, I would not be taking office downstairs. So I appreciate their support. And finally, to our outgoing counselor and zoning czar, Stephen Riordan. You know, I thought I knew a zoning czar in my own, my own household because my dad would talk, talk about zoning. He was a former zoning chair. And as nerdy as that sounds, you know, that's the household I grew up in. But Stephen has been, I think, the conscience of the council in many ways and he has always been prepared and he's always been knowledgeable on, on each issue and he's, he's had a perspective that I think was valuable to the city and valuable to the City Council. And the City Council is less off with him not being there. So Stephen, you know, best of luck and it's been a pleasure, a pleasure to work with you. So thank you. And I would be remiss if I did not thank my wife, my beautiful wife and baby Joseph. I know this will hopefully be played at some point and you can say your dad was a big nerd with an ugly tie, but I can't say enough to thank them and thank my family and all of my supporters and everybody. It's been truly an incredible experience and I look forward to the next four years.
Late motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor requests to contact National Grid and arrange for the placing of a street lamp on pole number 5199 at 37 Sagamore Street.
Yeah, that's, that's an area down the, obviously in the Sagamore Street area. It's very dark down there at evening. A couple of people have already taken a fall down there and I think it's something that's really needed down there to brighten up the area and give the residents a little more comfort with regard to public safety. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. President.
Signed by.
Mr. President.
Signed by.
Mr. President.
And we'll, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Janino.
I just have a quick point of personal privilege. I wanted to take a moment tonight to congratulate the Riviere High Papua New Year Patriots. They are national champions again, the A and B squad. And something that was brought up to me was that we promised them a sign at the entrance of every, entrance to the city and that was not done. So I hope that we can do that and add that they are also champions for this year as well and congratulate them. Thank you.
For everyone's edification, our next meeting will be an organizational meeting on January 4th at 7:00 PM.
Mr. President, private...
I want to wish everyone a happy, happy holiday season and a bright and shining new year. Thank you. Thank you.